Two thousand twenty Bowling Green Town Council meeting. These, uh, we do have a form, please go in the end of the place.
Of the United. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, the first item on the agenda is a public hearing. This public hearing is in regards to a budget amendment supplemental appropriation. Background, a little bit of a summary on it, this is in regards to section fifteen dot two dash twenty five oh seven. Continue requiring the qualification of the public hearing for us to amend our budget expenditures. And then, uh, excess of one percent of the total expenditure shown in the currently adopted budget. The towns, uh, this is in regards to the CARES Act. You received, uh, cap exceeded two hundred nine thousand three hundred ninety dollars from the caring county program. Corona vaccine relief and economic security act of twenty twenty five, and it exceeds the one percent. As a result, notice was published of council's intent to amend the fiscal year twenty 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 one budget. Add an additional two hundred nine thousand three hundred ninety to account for these new funds. These funds will be spent on the CARES Act compliant expenditures to include PCE for staffs, audio, digital equipment, technology to enhance screening of public meetings, facility upgrades, care packages to residents, small businesses, as, as, small business assistance. Uh, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in there? Sure. Second call? Third call? Well, it's a public hearing. Is there a motion to accept the budget? I'm gonna make the motion to accept the budget.
Second?
We have a motion by Glenn, a second by Valerie, all in. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Motion passed.
And just to clarify, that is a motion to amend the budget and appropriate the funds, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's how it's written, yes. Next item on the agenda is public comments. There's anybody here that would like to address council on any matter? Please, come aboard.
Aaron? Is three one? Are you making talk to him?
Alright, Jeff White, I'm here at the courthouse. Um, I just wanted to, uh, say, we know that the town council is having a mission. A little bit ago for our, you know, outreach, uh, session that we had. Andy?
Hello? Thank you. Okay, we'll move to staff reports. Are there any questions or, Justin, do you have any comments for your police report? Anyone have any questions for Justin?
I do.
Okay.
Justin, have you, um, I, I noticed, I didn't see, you know, tickets or exact coverage or another. There are still issues on Maury Avenue, and I know it's quite far out there, but I wonder, I've had people approach me and say, can we take another step forward? Think of a plan.
I, I personally have probably six or eight tickets on Maury.
Okay.
Um, suspended drivers as well. That's why I've been trying to leave a car there a couple days a week, you know? To try to think of something to help. But we are.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll stay out there more. I'll stay up there as much as I can.
No, no, I, I feel like I'm just wondering, I know we talked about before, habit and understanding mine, and I think we're at that point now where we need to, we need to do something. I mean, we're back where we were. You know, now that this dust has settled, and all the lax beer of the sewer lines and, um, and you've made a difference, Justin, it's not you. I'm just thinking, I live there and I know other people starting to see more of that. And we're also seeing all people because they're home, walking and biking on the roads. So it's a safety, it really is a safety concern. So if we need to order a study, what do we need to do to do that? We need to, um.
We, I, I know, we, we could talk to Kyle and VDOT, but I, I believe this one's gonna be, have to be funded by the town because, as we spoke of last time, because we did it. Every time we've done it, 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 the speech study doesn't do what we needed to do.
And a lot of it is where you're putting those, those lines, you're not putting them in the right place.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can reach out to Kyle and see if he has a cheaper route, if he, or whatever it costs. The speech study up to, we've probably done at least two, if not forty.
We do one at least twice a year, it seems like. Or, or Maury Avenue coming up, at least, probably down the year.
When we've talked about practice, calling, um, our communities out there, we've done the speech study. And we've done a lot of things, and nothing seems to be, uh, acceptable to VDOT. So I understand that the speed issue there sometimes, it's like everywhere else. Not because of the, the narrowness of the road, it makes it like.
I mean, VDOT proposed closing White Street to try to deter that, and so the seats, turn that option down, so. It's, it's a catch point too. And, you know, there's, it, it, we're held to VDOT standards, it's a VDOT road. VDOT offered to sell us the road, then the road becomes ours, we have to keep it, we have to maintain the road. I don't think that's an option that the town can afford at this time. Um, I will say that it's not just cut through traffic. There are citizens that live on that road that also should be, uh, seen it with our eyes, with some of the complainers about speeders and some of the vehicles coming from those houses, so. Just, yeah, I mean, we'll reach out to VDOT again and see if they feel like I think this, because I spoke about it the other day.
I know Kyle that we had, had any complaints on Maury in the last. But, but the mayor is right, it is people that live local.
Oh, yeah.
The majority are, the majority of the people are going to their home, um, to learn things of that nature, but I have wrote a few tickets to people that live in the area.
Yeah.
So it seems like, and, and I'm gonna say this, and, uh, it's gonna come out wrong, and I'm sure I'll take a beating for it, but it's a complaint until it's an inconvenience to the citizens on the street. And when the solution is an inconvenience to the citizens on the street, then it's not a, then it's not a complaint anymore. So it's either gonna be something drastic as we turn Maury one way, then the citizens are gonna complain because they have to go all the way around the loop. We close off White Street, then you've got four or five citizens that have issues there, so. I mean.
There's nothing else we can do.
I mean, I don't know what else we can do. I, I really don't.
I give them the same response, um, so just so you know, I, I understand all that, and I, I, I feel like, I mean, in all of that, I, I knew the way we presented the last campaign, how that was gonna turn out, because it was a very drastic measure.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I still don't understand why we can't have some kind of a sign that says, um, or, you know, there's speed bumps, whatever. I know that's all we got.
The signs we could potentially, I could probably convince Kyle to do the signs, but we'd pay for the signs again.
The residents didn't want speed bumps.
And I get, I can tell you, they wanted something.
Twenty-five mile an hour signs on the street, because the residents didn't want speed bumps. I don't remember the thing about the speed bumps. I remember the street, they didn't work that out.
Because this is why VDOT doesn't wanna put speed bumps, is because as soon as you put, buckle, put some speed bumps.
Yeah.
You pick, where are they gonna go? Because the first thing they're gonna say is, not in front of my house, because I can tell you on Main Street, there's a pop hole, there's a manhole cover right at Maury and Main. And just the noise of the traffic hitting that is wakes me up, so. I, I don't, I don't know, I mean, we could, I don't know that we have any money in one to buy speed signs, I don't even know how much they are, but, no.
We didn't buy the one.
The speed signs.
We bought the two. We bought those and VDOT was willing to put them in, they installed them.
Last week, we stopped two cars in the town road. Speed signs, if we're not there to catch them, then they're gonna, some people trying to blow it, see how fast they can get. You know, I don't think the sign did not do it, it's just gonna have to be more important, I'll drive you over there.
Chief, what about, I'm just, you see, so, what about people that just park on their own side of the street? That doesn't help either.
Oh, it does.
I mean, between Martin, Maury, there's tons of people that park. I mean, for me, that's like, you know it's a violation, why would park that way? So if you have someone coming down the road and you're pulling away on the roadside street, that's just an accident waiting to happen, so.
I think we probably need, you know, see, put up, maybe write warnings for the people parking.
We had that issue about seven, eight years ago, a little tiny, and then we were writing warning tickets, you know, on that entire section. It took us a while, but it's kinda come back around again, so. Warning tickets for visiting, real tickets for you to have.
Yeah. Because that's, that, the parking on the side of the street goes into another thing that we'll talk about with VDOT is, um, VDOT is willing to, to put the money again this year for sidewalks, but they're not willing to spend money, and I'm not willing to advocate for money on Maury Avenue. People are gonna park on the sidewalk. I mean, it, it's just not fair to VDOT, it's not fair to the Maury residents if they don't get sidewalks, but why are we gonna spend the money on sidewalks and then just get four of them people parking? So. I, I don't know. You know, we'll, we'll order the speech study or ask you to do it there, but. It's not just Maury. I can tell you, Main Street is the same way, uh, Milford Street, Anderson, same way. It's just Maury is narrow, and so, and it's more condensed with citizens, so it, it gets more complaint because.
Thank you.
But, no. Next item is our public works. Josh, do you wanna? Yes, um, the first I'd like to just throw at this, again, welcome. Um, if you can just give us an overview of what happened today on Main Street as far as, I thought it would be a. What I was.
A long one. Um, so thank y'all. Thank y'all for talking about the counter, um, I apologize for this morning. So what happened is when the contractors dug through the road, there was actually more, um, more asphalt layered in with the turf. And that's what's cooking longer, through the road. Um, and then when we went to turn off the water, a lot of valves were not holding, um, so we got to prove that kind of sign. And that's actually, you know, the whole town. Um, luckily, the contractor was able to get high form prepared. Um, but I do apologize for the longer.
You know, I mean, I understand, thinking that happens, though we're just.
And, uh, with the work project, we'll, we'll play that off that, and that may be used throughout.
So you have all the valves, what part do you have to see where they're gonna cut off?
Yes. Yes, and my plan, my goal is to have all mapped out, what street they would shut off, and start having a, 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 expect, for example, going out and checking out, making that full there, moving, um. Make sure.
As far as it may go?
Yeah, it, it is, um, and it looks like it'd be another time, all valves, um, make sure that that's all, you know, that's one. Now, if it's true.
So that brings us a question from the mayor. Which contractor do you vote for?
Uh, I think it's, okay.
So, um, there's one thing we'll be getting, probably, we, we also come to county, uh, if we work forth on that water silo, if we have that, we. Um, and, and we share that with, um. I thought we had decided that that would, that would just be a last divorce, or, 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 in fact, we did.
We can get people to pull it off before, after the contractor. And we let, the, the contractor be willing to, I don't know, to help us. I wonder, slightly more, but it was, it felt probably beyond the value.
It was slightly more, um, only because for the repair, it was the old line, old water line, was taken for, I think, um, the valve, the old valve that taken for, maybe by, called them. So instead of having it, uh, like the contractor wanted to do, actually had to cut out the main, replace that pipe, so that line completely, um, be categorized, and then. Should be some more issue with that.
Mayor, when we definitely, we looked, we looked at, uh, the county, very, um, willing to help us, and I'm not sure what the policy, I think it's all the county, but it's all.
Do they actually have a meeting on Monday morning?
I don't think so.
So I can have, I'll be down here tomorrow and, and.
Because I remember the, the negotiation we had with council members who worked with that school and last divorce. Yeah, we had a number of understanding, um, maybe opportunity to, that's, like, all, save us on all in call. And then you got to keep my vote. Um, I do have a question there, not gonna direct it later on, depending on the volume, what you should, um, definitely, like. Is that gonna be later, a question that we're gonna have, or a question?
Um, we're not gonna have a discussion later, because we don't have a real stack, but I'm sure that Josh can make a question, if you want to talk about that.
Yeah, can you just kinda give us an overall feel of what do you think we need to hear saw, and what are the, what's that for?
Um, so, we met with, um, I gave them like mine, but, um, and then we kinda had it, they kinda had it on through it. Um, so basically, the booking at midterm rule, um, for five percent, actually, one's gonna be keep up with, um, addressing high and high issues and addressing, um, capacity issues in the future. Um, and one of the things that we had talked about is just popping one to, uh, sovereigns out, you know, per day, um, design flow. Instead of, you know, going to bigger plants, but being a plant, they were designing in a way where we can stand later on if we need it, instead of having to completely upgrade the plant. So, the technology and the equipment will be able to stay in service, you know, throw it down the road rather than upgrade.
So, we were looking about, so, we're in passes, I don't know, yeah, um, without having to explain, uh, much, but.
Um, so, what, what I, um, and what we had talked about is facilities there, instead of like, tearing down like the office building.
Right.
To remodel it, um, instead of tearing down lots of equipment to have, just kinda rehabbing, remodeling to layer, it would take that time, but, say, if you, um, you're, you know, what I mean, to be there.
Yeah, so he's gonna come back to you with a general scope, another of the cost factor, what that might look like, give you more detail, we need that, but.
First, you can't, you know, propose something, you know, that then you're gonna be at the college, and then you'll come back to me.
Yeah, okay, alright, good, thank you.
Uh, I appreciate, um, there's no work, uh, and we shut, um, and another, um, outbuilding, um, well, we want, um, and there's gonna be a good out there. Um, and maintenance, um, the new building, and, uh, makes some area, we brought some of the, try and get some of that, um, work in-house, that would be very helpful.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on us, staff report, will be the economic development, the tax coordinator, Ross.
Mr. Mayor, Representative Castle. I now want to make the issues of CARES Act, funding and small businesses, the sense. So, I, you all know the grant application, you all prepared a word session, has gone out to all our small businesses, home businesses, um, and home businesses. Uh, we've received, it just went out, um, at the beginning of the week. Uh, we've received free that, um, already, so that's pretty good. Next week, Melissa and I talked about actually, you know, getting on a horn and calling each one individually, and possibly even going door to door, and, uh, and just alleviating the need, questions that people may have, addressing any questions or concerns. Uh, I've got a couple of appointments next week with a few different business centers, a couple of different business centers to help them with, with the application. Um, but it's going very well, uh, so far. Um, beyond that, I've done some little wish of waiting permission on our future ESMAP meetings, um, which I think went very, very well. Um, the smart scales for, the smart scale application for VDOT is one hundred percent completed, and you all adopted the resolution uh, at the last meeting, so that's been submitted to them. Um, if you're a department, that the, that resolution be submitted, but actually with our BEX, we guys are ahead of the game there. And I'm not sure when you'll hear back on whether or not we got that smart scale, um, whether we get the smart scale out through or not, but I will follow up with VDOT and find out when, I should have a review on that. Musical Green is, uh, was a very successful concert series, except we did have a lot of weather issues this year, it's just always, you know, it's just been watery. But, um, generally speaking, it was a really successful concert series, people were, um, very respectful of one another, I thought. Um, stepped to their groups, wore their masks for the most part when they got up from the long ground. Um, you all know, we, we secure an additional sponsor this year. Um, so Will Rabbit, uh, GG sponsor, needs to bring along with the lady community, and at the top of the chair, his sign was just a little bit bigger than his, but. He didn't bring that. Um, beyond that, I'm actively working with Community Heart and Soul, um, who plan the, uh, program that is designed to, as you know, give community back and buy in and, um, to gather data from the community, stories from the community, so that we can, um, so that everyone feels like they're a part of the community, and we can kind of burden what people want to see around here. Um, one of the ways that we're talking about doing that in the pandemic, with this, in any time, is through a lot of podcasts. Um, so that's been really exciting, talking about, um, doing storytelling with people in town, um, through a podcast. We're in the beginning planning stages of that, um, but if you approve with any question, with a questionnaire, which is probably how it will work, you'll get a questionnaire, and it'll ask you, it'll, it'll just give you some questions to think about, and then show on some Community Heart and Soul, or maybe even myself, may hold a few of all, and ask for you to share your, uh, some of your favorite memories, or wishes, or votes, or concerns about Bowling Green. But I'm keeping open, just on that. Um. I do not have much more than, than that, so, like I said, my main focus right now is, uh, working with EDA and, and CARES Act funding, of assistance, all the assistance. I do need to, um, get a decision from you all sooner than later on versus parade, um, that, you know, that is scheduled traditionally for the second Saturday of December. Uh, I've been monitoring regions around us neighboring regions to see if decisions are made. I believe Smalls Media has kind of canceled there, and the President's are doing a reverse parade, where the flight stays stationary on the road, and the spectators are actually the ones mobile driving through, um. That's a unique, that's the only jurisdiction that I've heard that, that's doing an alternative to a, to a traditional parade. Um, but I don't believe, uh, Flun's name, this didn't have, um, I think this EPL pays that on, on other reasons, and perhaps it's something that we can discuss, if you may know, or, and we can sit this one that way, whatever you all would like to do. It would be difficult to manage. Musical Green was very easy to manage, because people were stationary in their chairs, they're not, you know, up and moving around. Um, and if you're talking about a couple hundred people, it may as well be thousands. So, um, if we are gonna make some, some change, we are gonna have to pray, we're gonna have to put some serious thought into, um, how to make that reliant with, with, um, help your minds.
Well, I have a couple of quick questions for you. On your podcast, um, are you going to see any members of the community and giving their stories and, you know, these other type of things?
So one of the reasons we chose to, we're talking about doing the podcast, is, is to include those members in the community that are vulnerable. You know, these are very conversations that we can have and report, um, over the phone, and, and things that we don't have to be face to face in large group settings to do. Um, it's also a great way to digitally report some wonderful stories about the town and, and things that people love. But yes, the idea behind Community Heart and Soul is to actually make sure that every demographic, um, gender, race, age, that everyone in our community is, is covered, and there's a, there's a rather scientific method to it, um. I'm not the Community Heart and Soul expert, I've been going through the training along with, with everyone else. Um, but that is one of the most important fundamentals, is that everyone, that you're, that everyone is ready.
Down here, not like they only swallow, um, let's do that whatever, the, 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 and they, they, one of those kind of things is really important, you know. Great, appreciate that.
Sure.
And I guess for me, a couple of questions here, uh, EDA, what is the, I believe, you all know that, people are down this day, next week. But there's some direction on that. But I'm right, did I not understand that the care fund needs to go into the EDA, um, but you have to distribute it out of the EDA? I'm sorry, I'm muted.
I gotta unmute myself. Um, that is how I recommend doing it, yes.
So, in, in regards to that, um, like, Melissa, you all have done a really good job of finding out the technology that we need to have, because we started spending money about eighty years ago. So do we have, do we have proposals to get into that yet?
We do. Can I get clarification? That's what you know, the email that I sent for, uh, the technology.
Yeah, and I'm asking that because if the EDA is to disperse those funds, you know, we need those documentation. And the process to do that, our, our, or is the EDA, that's possibly what's gonna happen, but they know that they will have to act practically with this stuff.
So I think, I have no understanding, and I'm sorry, I think we should clarify this, all, are you saying all the hard money go through EDA for, and then we go and put this through? Or just the stuff of the small business assistance?
The, Melissa, the audio for me has gotten really scratchy, are, I, I did not understand your question.
I have this understanding of how the CARES Act funds. My understanding of what Glenn is saying is he's saying all funds to be given to the EDA, and then if you need to buy DVD or technology, it comes through the EDA. My understanding would be just a small business assistance fund to the EDA.
That is correct.
So the technology and things like that do not go through the EDA?
Right, like if we're buying something, technology for town hall, it does not need to go through the EDA?
Oh, probably.
Okay, um, just, just wanna make sure we're clear, because the EDA will lead the, the, that process. Make sure that those identify, identify businesses that people think some funding are done, and that they can go forward to make that happen. Because technology, that we're looking at for a lot of the focus of, is growing short. There's a lot of money out there for this, and again, we don't wanna give any money back to the county. We're out of use for our citizens and businesses here, so I, I wanna make sure that, uh, that the EDA will wrap it.
So we do have the resolution, the one that I gave, that, so the EDA can help the families, the family, the small business, and hopefully, if I'm wrong, but you also been looking through a process with the EDA at the meeting on Monday?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we should talk about that, but quite frankly, I vision that we need to, to, to get in, helping the company. They'll, or. Uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, I'm, I'm, however, understanding what this is about. And so, 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 just like, you know, if you wanna do that, it'll bring it out. Does that make sense?
Absolutely, and, um.
Perfect, perfect, well, thanks for all the hard work, really appreciate it.
Any other questions for you all? Yeah, Joshua, what is the illumination you're discussing with Old Man Ken?
So it'll be every week, I have a call with an old man, every Friday morning, at thirty, and, um, there is a large tree, Christmas tree, if you will. there is a large tree, Christmas tree, if you will, on the shout end of the property. And the owners had talked about since they're unable to do a wine festival, they, they really, not only do they want themselves to be a part of the community here at Bowling, but they really want for the Old Mansion to be the community's. And they want for the community to identify with that sort of property. So one of the things that they talked about was giving a community illumination tree decorating, um, product, product. Initially, we were talking with the superintendent of Thurland County Public Schools and the assistant superintendent to coordinate in our department on doing that through virtual projects or art projects with students under some, some sort of general criteria of how to make an ornament, it would be global outside and frankly, the conversation started and then when the pandemic happened, I think the school system just became rather overwhelmed with having the new structure. So we were getting a lot of feedback from the school. And so we, we are now talking about making families in our community and kind of doing the same thing, but making it a family household project as opposed to through the school systems. Right now, we're, so this would involve families or children making, making it
Under some sort of, like I said, criteria, maybe a, maybe a video tutorial to show them how to make the ornament. And then relying on volunteer groups in town to help with the installation of those. The owners of Old Mansion have been, have invested in ground lighting for that tree. Mark and myself and Sam Fry had a, had a nice Zoom meeting with, with Maria Lou, who's the, the wife. What, a couple of weeks ago, and, and we talked about this. They've invested a lot of money in this ground lighting to illuminate the tree and the idea is that the tree would never be illuminated except for this one time at Christmas. And the idea is that it would give the town kind of a beacon of hope for a year gone by and a year to look forward to ahead. Right now, where we are is I'm trying to gauge interest and commitment. The owners have made it very clear that if this isn't something that they can get buy-in from on the community, if, you know, only a half a dozen or a dozen families, you know, say, yeah, we want to make an ornament, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. The idea is to get lots of folks involved and everyone have a little part of, a part of themselves on the tree. So right now, we're just trying to gauge interest. I've talked with Melissa about, you know, we're giving out PVE bags. Talked about putting a little, little questionnaire in there and, you know, are you interested? If so, email me, let me know. Maybe putting it on our website, you know, advertising it that way, just to, we need to, right now, we need to almost get, almost a head count of, of who's involved and if it, or who would like to be involved. And if the answer is that we just don't have a lot of enthusiasm toward that, then we just won't do it. The owners of Old Mansion are interested in making their tree on their property, this beautiful Christmas tree for their pleasure. They, they want for this to be a community project. And if, you know, so that's where we stay on this.
Great, thank you. So I still, I don't know if this is even thought about. You know, we do the tree. In, yeah. I, I'm a little concerned. I mean, I think it's a great idea, I don't want, but I'm just going to throw it out. I know there are people involved that take that very seriously.
Sure, sure. I brought that, I brought that up to you, um, very early on. We first have this conversation and that's why we involved, included Mark in our meeting. One of the reasons why we included Mark in our meeting with Community Heart and Soul as well was to talk about that because this was an initiative that Mark started. I, 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 I think, I understand what you're saying and I think it's a very valid point. The feedback that I've gotten is it's Christmas, the more Christmas trees, the merrier kind of thing. But I do see the cross over there, the overlap there, absolutely. And in no way with this, you know, I think the community tree in, on, on mansion is bringing.
Kind of disorder because the one that you, you do is in a somewhere in town decorated with real ornaments where this is actually something that could be, if there's interest, that might be citizens and a little more input from the, you know.
A little more personal.
Personal with the.
And, you know, right now, it's, again, we're just trying to see if people are even interested in, in doing that. Families on the long plates these days with, with paint, hardening and, you know, all kinds of things. So we just need to gauge interest. If it's not something that we can do this year, maybe we'll look at doing it next year. But I think the Old Mansion owners are really just interested in figuring out creative ways to still engage the community in the middle of a pandemic.
Was there a thought that you would have a grand elimination of the tree? Bring the community in, there's a lot of space over there, so there's certain space, a park, a lot of, it's a beautiful.
That was the idea.
It depended upon the weather, obviously, but like, like a nice grand elimination.
That was the.
Things out there that would, that might be meaningful, people are all stuck inside and, you know, kids have been stuck inside forever and ever. And I'm feeling maybe to get out quickly.
Sure. That is the idea.
Do they have date in mind or all of a sudden?
No, they do not. Right now, like I said, it's, it's kind of up in the air, are we even going to do this or not?
This one on the question, Wild Child Food, is that connected with Wild Child Food Company in the UK?
No, um, no, they are the couple that are leasing from Jason Mann's at 101 Work Name. The flower shop, so they have a company called Wild Child Foods and I met with them a couple of weeks ago, just to talk about their business model and their concept. Which is a farm, a farm table, locally sourced, retail slash takeout.
Right, which is similar to the one in FYF.
Oh, yeah. No, but, but interesting, yeah, no, they, they did move down to New York, so if you had said New York, I'd have to go. Yeah, maybe. But no, I don't believe it's the same. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Joel. Any questions or comments for the town clerk slash treasurer slash active town manager? All the above?
I just have a couple of questions on some invoices. There's one for local services for $90 that pops up for a couple of times. What is that?
That is the farmer's market port of honey.
Oh, yeah. And David Brooks for the damage to the fence, does the $2,800 include taking out the tree and the fence?
It does, and it was insurance claim also, so we recovered $1,800.
We did what?
For Jamie to come to help? $2,480?
That should, that's her annual permit.
And the $500 for the BCBA, that's for the grant money that was in Joel's account, right?
Um, yes, the $500, we were sent $500 and then it, we cashed it out and Joel, so can you remind me, um, the $500 for BC's, what, which, uh, BGVA, is that the one?
So, um, town council voted to give Community Heart and Soul $500 to pay for their reveal items, which are banner, rat cards, and I think.
Why didn't, we didn't write them a check?
No, because it was decided that I would act as the fiscal agent for them.
Okay, so that's not, that's not the $500.
No, that's what I'm saying. The $500 is for that grant that we got on the ball.
The, the $500 that came in is from Fredericksburg Area Association of Realtors.
And we just deposited and wrote the check back.
So we have to deposit it and then write a check to, yes, to BGVA Community Alliance earmarked for Community Heart and Soul.
Right, so it's just a pass through.
A pass through.
And your USDA applications and projects, what applications are, do you have in progress right now?
So right now, we have one application in for the public works vehicle, which I'm working through with Cindy, hi, I'm her representative. We are working on the public vehicle, which you'll see in the pack of tonight. We have the water system project, which is ongoing, we just want to fulfill the letter of conditions. And then we also are working on a grant to fund the PER at the water.
Right, so nothing additional, that's.
No, things you've heard about, they're just ongoing.
Okay, yep, thank you.
All righty, next item is a concern agenda, is our motion to approve the September bills and the minutes for June, July, July, August, and September?
I'll make a motion.
Any motion by Deborah? Second by Louis, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. Moving on to unfinished business, we have a, we need a motion or a bond resolution to town. This is in reference to the secured letter of conditions for permanent funding for improvements to the town's water system from the United States Department of Agriculture Rule Development in the form of a loan not to exceed 5,693,000 and grants not to exceed 1,602,000 for a long-term financing package of $7,295,000. The loan from our, the rule development will be evidenced by the town's revenue bond, which will be payable solely from revenues from the town water system. We held a public hearing on June 4th and at this time, we just need a motion to pass the bond resolution move forward so we can adopt it.
So if I can just add something really quickly, this probably sounds really familiar. And it's because we did this exact same bond resolution for the interim financing. And so now we're doing it for the permanent financing. So that's why it looks like we're doing it again.
So this relinquishes the bond on the temporary.
This gets this ready for that, that the bond won't turn over to the, or rule development until we actually finish construction.
I'll make that motion. Okay. We have a motion by Mark, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Deborah, any further discussion? Roll call goes, Glenn?
Yes.
Have a listen, yeah?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to new business. Agenda item is a resolution 2020-009 to reimburse the EDA for expenditures related to small business assistance using the CARES Act funds. A resolution to reimburse the EDA for expenditures related to small business assistance using the CARES Fund Act. Is there a motion to approve resolution, adopt resolution 2020-009?
I do have a question on the terminology.
Let's, let's do the motion in a second. Your motion, we have a second.
Yeah, we're talking about reimbursement, I'm not really sure what we're saying in that.
Andre, would you mind speaking to that?
I, I.
Why are we, why are we calling it reimbursement?
What is the question about reimbursement?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
She asked you, why?
I'm sorry, Andre, why are we calling it reimbursement? To me, that means the EDA pays it out first and then gets reimbursed for it?
That is correct.
How do we do that? How's, the EDA doesn't have any money in their budget?
It was my understanding that the EDA does have some funds available.
Nowhere near. What's it going to take to do that? Who, who made that decision?
Well, so here's the thing, so the town council cannot individually enrich citizens and businesses. And that's why I recommend that this money be distributed through the EDA. But at the same time, there has to be an assurance that the expenditures meet the requirements of the CARES Act. Because otherwise, then the town is going to be on the hook for reimbursing the federal money. So my thought was, since the EDA has some funds that that the EDA could issue the grants out of the funds that it has and then promptly seek reimbursement from the town.
And we do not need to, they do not need to vote from council to do that with this resolution. We can do that ongoing on a weekly basis. Is that right? Administrative?
Right, that's right.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, as long as you have enough funds to cover the first one.
Wow, like how much is in the budget for the EDA right now, 10,000?
10,000, and when I spoke to Joel Sa, um, earlier this week, she was going to get a spending plan together to talk the EDA about so they can come to council and adopt that. However, I will say, the way that our general letter is set up, we will operate out of one operating account. So it's a matter of a transaction within our accounting system to say that we're reimbursing the EDA. So it was the EDA, the funds are there.
System administrative.
Right, it's just language and words, really, and numbers, which is the way the government will. So, so the money is there.
Yeah, the, the issue again becomes the timing. If you get this done by the end of the year, if you guys know, send a letter out and said some of that technology is not available for eight weeks, maybe 10. So you can't really extend those funds out until, you know, you've got a proposal, you've got something installed. So maybe 10 weeks before the first tranche of those are installed. So we, it's hard to, to account that. We need to talk about a little bit more detail.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the, the checks come out in the same account or the EDA?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a.
We have a four month warranty.
It's a letter.
Right, it's just a ledger transaction.
Right, so we can't, we can't.
The EDA has receipts or they have purpose orders and they say, well, we only got 10,000, but we need 20. You know, here, here's what we have, here's an invoice, we need this much money now trying to look over, trying to back pay it out, you know, from through the EDA, you know. I mean, that's the same thing as saying we want to reimburse, we can't go out with the hell.
Right.
As long as they have it on papers, that's, that's the same thing.
Well, we want to make sure that the contractor, if we choose a local contractor who's, who's, we may want to pick, it's understanding of that, that that has to be transferred over. We have to have to sign a proposal for whichever one individually, it's not a blanket proposal, obviously. So once that transfer happens rapidly and we don't pay the guy out there for 30 or 60 days.
We pay all bills within Sunday. If we pay a bill on the Friday, so we have the bill on the day of Friday.
Yeah.
We'll work that out.
So this has nothing to do with this discussion, but I, I was privy of their bill paying process because somebody approached us about a company funding our bills and not having that long delay. And I was very impressed how quickly they processed. And that company was very impressed that we were able to document, process and self-check ourselves.
We have a good staff, that we have a really good type process and even the auditorium for the process, I process, so.
So we'll talk about that.
Any further discussion on resolution 2020-009? We'll do a roll call, we'll go this way, this, Artis, no?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Oates? You throw me off with you.
Because I'm in there, there.
Motion passes. Okay, the next item is, uh, in regards to the resolution seeking a search grant for the police vehicle. I'm not going to read the whole thing. Everybody's aware that our 2005 Crown Victoria has become inoperable and it's not worth the cost to, to repair. So we're looking at a search grant that will fund the 25,000 and the total purchase price of 33,000, which includes the lights and everything. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make a motion, please.
Motion in a second?
I do have a question.
Any discussion?
Yeah, we have a $25,000 grant. Are we saying that the, the exact duplicate of what we have is 33,000?
Yes, is that true?
It wouldn't be an exact duplicate of what we have. In fact, Chief, I guess Chief Stace always laugh, but there's been an issue with the new police explorers. And so he's chosen to go with the Dodge.
I, Dodge, uh, Durango?
Yeah, I believe that's what it is. And that's what the sheriff's office has been using. So we would be piggybacking, I believe we, I can't recall which one we found, but they might be there that they need to piggybacking on that contract and that's when we got that price. But.
Okay, yeah, because there is issue to afford on change, so this includes all the lighting packages, everything.
Yes, I believe the actual purchase price of the vehicle is like, was 28,000, so there's a 5,000 for lights.
Okay.
Radios, and he doesn't plan on, he plans only on Mark, so that will say a little money.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Mark? Roll call goes?
Yes.
Well?
Oh, yeah.
Dean?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Moses?
Yes.
Wait, yes. Motion passes. Next item is a utility rate work session. As a requirement of the letter of conditions issued by USDA Rule Development, obviously, that 2019, the town. Next item is a utility rate work session, as a requirement of the letter of conditions issued by USDA rule development, obviously, in two thousand nineteen, the town must establish, adopt and maintain a rate schedule that provides adequate income to meet the minimum requirements for operation and maintenance, debt service and reserves. This rate schedule must provide the minimum monthly EDU cost of thirty-five dollars, thirty-five forty-five. Prior to request and authorization to bid, you must provide a draft resolution, in use of income analysis and operating budget. The documents must be based on the anticipated active customers and the budget must show repayment of the. Prior to closing or the start of construction, whichever refers first, estimated to be twelve twenty twenty, we must provide evidence that our rate resolution has been adopted, as well as evidence indicating that rates will be placed into effect at the beginning of the first full year of operation after construction of the project, estimated to be twenty twenty-four. Requested actions are schedule a work session to discuss rates and suggested dates of ten fifteen and ten twenty-two.
Does anyone, does anybody Thursday, so I try to just keep it consistent, but does anyone have a date that doesn't work, or? I'm going for either one.
Same here.
Okay, let's just pick one, give up.
Date in the other day that doesn't work?
Either one, fifteen's probably better, in my, in my way, I said surgery on the twenty-first.
All right, if everyone's okay with the fifteen?
Let's do the fifteen.
Seven, at seven P M, yes.
Someone invited to that?
Yes, all work sessions, I'll probably.
Make sure we're notified on that, if you're not, I'd really appreciate that.
Yep.
Is there a motion to schedule a work session for October fifteenth? At seven P. Motion by Glenn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Valerie, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. Next item is reduce the number of council members from seven members to five members. At the last council meeting, staff was directed to gather information and present to council. It's options for reducing the number of council members from seven members to five. The town attorney has drafted a memo detailing two options for council to proceed. I just have one question. Is this, and I didn't read either of those options, I can't even pretend I did, but do we have to have a public hearing?
One option is an election by, I mean, by vote, and the other is a public hearing. So either one is the citizens that are gonna be.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's referendum, which has an added cost to it, so my recommendation is that you just do the public hearing. And you can do the public hearing if you wanna authorize it tonight, and we can probably squeak it in for this general assembly.
Okay. My, my only concern about squeaking it in is this is a change to our charter, that's been this way for a long time, and I just wanna make sure the public is fully aware that we're gonna be reducing their voice from council, from seven to five. And, you know, 'cause I had some people approach me, they've read the minutes or watched the video or something, and said, you know, why? And I didn't have a great answer except for, yeah, maybe, a lot of people causes things to be delayed a little bit longer 'cause there's more decisions to be made, more discussion, which, they're like, what's, what's wrong with more discussion and more input from, from the citizens? So I just wanna make sure the citizens are well aware of this, have plenty of time to make this, and that we don't just slam something through without the citizens full understanding and buying. 'Cause that's the last thing I want is my legacy changed at the end of this, or any of those who've been on council a long time, we slammed something in as we were walking out the door and they didn't, they weren't aware of it. 'Cause it's a pretty big deal to, to change this.
Well, since we have an election coming up and there will be seven, it won't be for two more years that.
Yeah, it doesn't happen that way.
So probably, I mean, I don't know that, maybe I'm speaking out of term, but could we wait till next general assembly? We'll get plenty of time to get the word out and it's not gonna affect when the number changes.
Yeah. I think, I think we should, I think we should host a couple, it gives us a chance, a lot being did, for the citizens to come and understand why we're, we're, wanna do this. Sorry.
Try and throw with that, the more people that can give their opinion, the better. One of the reasons I did suggest this was change is always good, but right now, we have people running around town saying we don't have enough town council members to run. That's one of your main reasons, I mean, we have people deciding to do things at the last minute. So with five people, it streamlines decisions, it streamlines just the coordination of anything. Many, many counties only have five, and they're twice the size, three times the size than we are. We did it for the planning commission, and it has worked really well, reducing from seven to five. You have a challenge again, trying to get someone on the planning commission, but that's something that's forever for the planning commission. For town council, to have us running around at election time saying we don't have enough people running for town council, is unfortunate.
So what do we do, what do we do, what do we do to encourage that? I can tell you, right now, the days of people doing it as volunteer are basically at a very low salary.
True, with five people, with five people, that increases your competition though. It gives people more competitiveness and a bigger pool of people to say, sure, let me do it then.
But then it's a little, in my opinion, it just reduces the, yeah, it reduces the checks and balances a little bit because you get, oh, it's just.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's decision, I mean, it's.
So that, yeah, that's what I'm saying, I think it's a great idea to explore, and if the citizens want it, then let's do it, but let's make sure the citizens are well informed.
Absolutely.
That we do this, and I, I think we should do, I almost feel like we should do a public hearing to see if that's something that they want as a referendum.
We could do something similar that we did with the planning commission, we did a public info meetings for, we can express the idea, explain the value, you know, the points of council, and then get feedback. Is there a key date you guys want to try to get this info meeting together? You wanna do it at a council meeting?
We can do it at the November meeting, so December.
Okay.
And then just from that info meeting slash unofficial public hearing, we could gauge the interest, and that will give us some framework on whether we go referendum or we go a real public hearing.
So if you're gonna go that way, there's no real hurry in having that public hearing because of, of, you know, soliciting the input, you know, I think you could do that really at any time over, say, the next nine months.
So do we wanna put it off after the first meeting here, since it'll be on November council embrace, or does it?
I'll look to the ones that are gonna be on council after December thirty-first. I mean, I, I don't have a problem hosting the public hearing, the, the public information session at the December meeting and kicking it off and letting the new council make the final decision, but
I think, I would.
I would like to.
I feel like you should steer it.
I, I obviously would like to, to steer the, the discussion on the public side. And let's blast out on social media and get it out there that we, you know, we did a good job of getting turnout for the future use map, let's see if we can fill the room for, for this also. And I'm a little jealous that planning commission, I thought we should be using the stage every time and sitting up on the stage and having the public spaced out instead of having us in separate rooms.
We have discussed that, and that can be something we do with the technology at first.
Yeah, 'cause the, I thought that was impressive that everybody was up there, we gave everybody in the same room versus this disconnect being like this.
Did you guys have any public hearing down, down there?
Yeah, I don't know. But it was very nicely.
The presentation screen wasn't there enough.
Yeah.
That's something we definitely need to.
Yeah, it wasn't there enough, that's what you need.
I think that her presentation screen was from nineteen seventy-three, and it was the Ray founded, talking about. Is that care tech?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, well, maybe you'll surprise us if November meet, and we'll be sitting on the stage for the November December meeting. Okay, so the decisions, we'll, we'll move on this, but we're not hampered by a thousand street at this point. Informational reports. As you see, we have national night out in there, actually, I'm sorry, I missed seventeen, missed my beat up. All right, so I don't think we're gonna have the, the answers that we all wanted to hear, but we will go over what we were talking with Kyle. So on September twenty-second, myself and town staff met with Kyle Bates, the resident, resident engineer for Frederickburg residency to discuss some current concerns raised by council in the public. Sidewalks on North Main Street, Maria Avenue that still have not been repaired, the defective crumbling areas in the street, there were Cape Seal paving of the former median at the stoplight, adding some end of twenty-five mile per hour zones to try to encourage people from seeing the, the higher speed limit and accelerating to them. The new crosswalk that was approved at North Main, which was basically at the sweets, the Bowling Green Suites across to like the Mexican restaurant. So this is the response we got back, and pardon me for reading from my phone, but.
I haven't received this response yet, when we put the packet together, I only put the packet, I only put the response.
So the ironic part of this is Kyle is very familiar with the town of Bowling Green because he worked under Sean Nelson for many years and was related, was in the area, very familiar with it. He was actually the one that recommended the Cape Seal for the town of Bowling Green, because he is a believer in the Cape Seal. But on that topic of defective crumbling areas in the streets, the area on Chase Street that were, we discussed as a base failure that has come through. Our beat out staff has identified many areas for the contractor to patch prior to placing the Cape Seal. This was one of the ones that was missed, or had not gotten to that level at the town of resurfacing. His crews are scheduling to dig this out and patch it with asphalt prior to the winter. He also went through Meadow Lane and Roper Drive, but did not see anything that stood out. He said oftentimes with new Cape Seal citizens accessing from their driveways, ride over a fresh seal, if they turn their wheels too short, they can leave a light indention. This is not an issue for, for traveling the public. So with that one, Glenn, if you have some addresses, let me know, 'cause I want him to go see those addresses.
Issues that we had, it feels like a wash, we're riding up and down our area there. When you go back there, you, you ride back there, you can feel the vibration on the road, shouldn't be feeling that vibration on the road.
All right, to be able to better understand what, what to pass on there, we were thinking it was crumbling like Chase Street.
Crumbling is on Gill Street.
On Gill Street, at the bottom where those cars turn around.
And at the top also. It's crumbling right there, you come in on, on Gill Street off of Main.
Okay. We'll document those two spots.
Did they go down Gill Street?
I told him about the end of it, but he didn't give us a response.
He didn't give us a response, but he was asked to go down Gill Street.
So we'll, we'll follow up at those two specific spots on Gill Street. So one of the questions was paving the former medians at the stoplight, and I just brought this up again, I thought it was a poor choice for VDOT to remove the medians partially and then come in and mill and pave, but leave the concrete, it just looked bad, and it's rough right there, there's intersection. So he'll need more time to ride this, as you stated, this is something that really should have been done with the schedule. Now it seems it may cause more harm than good to the existing roadway, more to come, so we'll have to follow up, we'll, we'll hold to the more to come. Mark, any end of the twenty-five mile per hour zones, or some other visual cue on Main Street when leaving town? This was a request by the police chief. Kyle states that he's gotten traffic engineer staff taking a look at it. They're not in favor of adding additional twenty-five mile per hour speed signs, however, he has them thinking of some other ideas. He will follow back up with us in thirty to sixty days when they have completed the study. The new crosswalk on North Main Street near entrance to Bowling Green Suites, this is approved, however, we don't have funding available for it. He is open to utilizing the county safety funds, but this will delay some of the sidewalk repairs that we are working on formulating a plan for. The project engineer is putting together an estimate, and we can discuss this further once we have the sidewalk plan together. So basically, all of these, we didn't get any interest, except for maybe follow up, except for the Chase Street that they've gotta take that out. So thirty days, we'll do, put a, do a check in with him, and then we'll, if he doesn't have one, we'll definitely hold him to that sixty days.
Yeah, I don't know about his, his judgment, he's the one that wanted the cape out there.
He's a believer of Cape Seal.
And it was a financial, financially driven decision because of the.
It was cheaper.
Oh, a lot, it's like pennies on the dollar compared to the.
Question though.
I think the other good thing about that, we can get up the rates again in a couple of years anyway.
So he, he did state, and I don't have it in writing, so I know it's only as good as his word, that the, the money that we got this year for sidewalk repairs, what that's allocated for Caroline County will be back to the town of Bowling Green to finish out. And he's hoping he can continue to that every year until all the sidewalks have been.
He does mention in that email that he would have to redirect funds from the sidewalk to the crosswalk if.
Yeah, and that's why he's gonna get an estimate first, so once he gets the estimate on the crosswalk, I guess we'll make a decision, do we want the crosswalk or do we want a couple more? Sidewalks fixed, so we'll just have to balance that once he gets back to us.
So did we continue for sidewalk money with Plaidsland Village?
So, yes, so the safety money that is seventy-five, I think he said seventy-five thousand every year, is technically for all of Caroline County. He actually earmarks it for Bowling Green, where I sidewalks. And that is his plan going forward, is to keep doing that. And, and I, I don't have any issue believing that's what he's gonna say, because he worked under Sean Nelson, and Sean is the one that advocated to get the town paved. And then we were delayed because of the project, which in turn lost some money, because that's why we didn't get all of the town paid. Because Sean had, had budgeted years ago for the whole town to be paved, and we told him not to pay yet because we knew we had a sewer project coming. And it just didn't make sense to spend the money to pave it, to turn around and cut it up, and then we be responsible for the full payment, so. I think Kyle will hold to it, and I, I feel like he's in a new position and a better fit for the position than the previous person, and has more interest in the town than the previous. So we'll follow up definitely with him on thirty to sixty days.
You know, I'm wondering if we need to maybe think about some kind of size on Maria Avenue, as far as, we're talking about cars parking on sidewalks. I mean, I, I'll say this, when people get visitors, I mean, my family included, they don't even think about not parking on the side of the street. So I don't know, it's just.
He said that, he, that was one of his suggestions for the parking on sidewalks, was he would, he would encourage us to put up no parking signs.
I, I feel like that's only fair if we're gonna.
You kinda gotta go through though and, and look at each property individually, because some don't have off-street parking.
They don't, you're exactly right.
So you gotta work with them, but those areas just maybe don't get sidewalks. That's where we are on that. National Night Out will be held on October sixth, Justin, Chief Cecil sent out an email regarding that. Caroline and her apartment management is actually providing the DJ and free food for the students. Report of council, Mark? Valerie?
Planning Commission had, as you know, their future use public hearing. It was a nice success. Chairman Voight, Melissa and Jo Elsa did a fantastic job of putting everything together. The PowerPoint presentation was extremely easy to understand for especially laypeople in the room. The collaboration between them was done extremely well, so everyone felt comfortable, I think, in the room. so everyone felt comfortable, I think, in the room. The corroboration of information was fantastic, especially on the plant. So I'm very happy about that. So very good information was disseminated. I think people were happy to get or be a part of it, because we've never done anything like that before. And I think they have a better understanding of what the planning commission is. It's not just we drew a map and put colors on. There is reasoning and thought behind all of that. So I wanna thank the three of them for doing a great job, and especially the public for tuning in, because without them, we wouldn't be having a work session next week. So thank you all who were there as well.
The EDA did not meet because several members weren't able to attend. We're meeting Monday night.
Same with you. Yeah, it's gonna be a pretty significant meeting Monday night, so we're looking forward to some information from you back to the council.
Yeah, I will say I was very appreciative of the future use map, and I spoke and just encouraged that the citizens that showed up need to be vocal at every step of the way, not just at the future use. They can't show up and the six or seven that voted, that voiced their opinion about the R3 at the end of town, can't stop and say that's it, and then move on. Planning Commission is a body of citizens, and y'all can only act on what the citizens want with their input. So I encouraged them, and I still encourage, as I hear chatter about that area down there, to, the only way to stop it or change it is for you to come out and voice your opinion and give good reasoning behind it, not just, I don't want it, but give good educated reasoning behind it and staying into the processes. With that, I commend Melissa also on that night. Not that everybody else, everyone else did a great job. Melissa answered and clarified a lot of good answers, misspoke answers from other people. And I was very proud of the way she handled herself in that setting, standing up to some very strong-willed comments. And she was very pointed, very professional, and answered and clarified correct information. And I commend you for that. And I encourage you, if you hear talk on the street, let's get this straight, because I know some staff members have been catching some bad information, like bad, I don't know what to say, like... Yeah, like they've been catching flack over things that supposedly they said or they did, and they weren't involved in it. So if you hear it, tell the citizen to come, come talk to Melissa, Joel, so whoever, and let's squash any of these rumors, because we can't, you can only work in facts, and the facts need to come out to the public, and not just running around creating a mass hysteria just to try to disguise all the atmosphere. With that said, is there a motion for closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code two dot two dash three seven one one eight eight for consultation with the town attorney about a specific legal matter damaged to one twenty-three South Main Street and Kelvin contract for water sewer line replacements?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
There's a motion filed. Glenn, is there a second?
Seven.
Second by Deborah. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, and we will take a break to clear the room.
Okay, do we certify that we only spoke about what we went into closed session for?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll certify.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll certify. Okay, we're out of closed session. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the, uh, paid servicer contractors, total amount of $12,800.
Eighty-one.
Fifty-one, fifty-two.
Yes.
Yep. Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
And also, once, once we, you know, at the same time, we retain a, uh, health, uh, health harmless cause agreement from the candidates. And we go after Kelvick and try to retain our money back. Any other action we...
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Any further discussion?
Um, the motion does state that it's for the damage related to the, um, work done by Kelvick Construction.
I will, I will put that on there that was for the damage that resulted from the work that Kelvick done.
Okay, and do you mind your second?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Um, we're gonna do a...
I will, I will put that on there that was for the damage related to the result of the work that Kelvick done.
Okay, and do you need your second?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Um, we're gonna do a roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Dean?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Is there?